All right. Why order for July order, July meeting, the plan commission to order roll call please.
Commissioner Shalay? Here. Moyer? Here. Knack?
Here.
Harmon?
Here.
McCaffrey?
Here.
Whitehouse? Sardar?
Here. Any additions or deletions from the agenda?
None from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Anyone here for a public foreman or? We're on it tonight. Public comment period for non agenda items that is anything other than what is on the action item list tonight. Anybody wish to speak? No? Hey, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the June fifth meeting?
I move we approve the minutes from the June fifth meeting?
I second.
Roll call please.
Can I clarify, is that for both A and B?
I was just gonna do them individually since they're two line items.
Okay, Commissioner Shalay?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Knack?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Sardar?
Yes. And also a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of the June twelfth meeting.
I move to approve the special meeting minutes of July twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
June twelfth correction.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Oh.
I don't think we have to restate it.
What did I say?
July.
Oh, well, you know, it's probably thinking.
Yeah, I understood that it was the motion was for June twelfth.
Well, minutes for clarification. Roll call. Roll call please, Betty.
Commissioner Shalay?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Knack?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Sardar?
Yes. Hey, we will move on to the new business for the night to site plan review for Bonfire. I believe Paul is gonna give the presentation whenever you're ready, sir.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna run the slide presentation deck. I had to run updates for Zoom, so I've just got into the meeting and I'm gonna be front of this panelist. And then we'll have it up and running. So Paul, if you wanna start introductions, I'll get your powerpoint up here in just a moment.
Thank you for the introduction. The item tonight is a site plan. For lot three, block one, Bonfire subdivision. The address is eighty-seven sixty-one Bonfire Drive. The applicant is Streamline Crane Services. And the agent is Precision Draft and LLC. The request is for approval of a site plan in a light industrial zone district. It, the site is located in the northeast region of the town in the Bonfire subdivision, I believe. We've had two prior projects this year. It's continuation development of that Bonfire subdivision. Sure, there we go. One more, Cody. There we go. Then again, this is located in the northeast section of the town adjacent to I twenty-five. East of Larry McConney Road seven or Sixth Street in the town. Next slide, Cody. The site is comprised of approximately one point nine acres. Again, it's own light industrial. From that slide, you can see the Vesser funeral and a detention basin is to the west. So this site would be visible from Sixth Street, Larry McConney Road seven. Which is just west of a Vesser, the adjacent lot. To the north is AWC frac. And to the south is lots, one and two, and they're yet to be developed. Here we go. The Bonfire subdivision following two is approved in December of twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen, I'm sorry. I apologize. Drainage basin, again, it's dry, it's to the, to the, to the west, and that's indicated by the blue. And that straddles the property line, common property line. There is an existing easement, a fifty-foot easement. That goes from the southeast corner of the property to the northwest corner of the subdivision. I believe that easement, as you can see, kinda came a challenge for the design team to locate and to use that site as best, most efficiently as possible. And again, this site is accessed off of a Bonfire which connects to Sixth Streets, Larry McConney's Road seven through Ember and Glow avenues to the north and south of the subdivision. And this is the site plan. I will say that since the staff report and this was published, the applicant consultant team did respond to some questions that were raised, some review comments. And I do have the latest and greatest set of plans that addressed all the comments that we had, the issues that we had in regards to parking and in regards to ADA and access and so forth. But this is the site plan as proposed of two weeks ago. Again, you can see the, the parking is along the front, parallel to the front between the building and Bonfire. Bonfire, Bonfire Drive. And there's thirteen spaces along the front of the building into the north and south sides of the building. ADA is centered in the middle. The current plan that once we just submitted is show an access lane going from the ADA parking space to the front of the building, and then there's a sidewalk or a at-grade sidewalk that provides access for ADA to either the north, the south side of the building to the entries. Cody? The architecture, thank you. The architecture is consistent with the area. It's earth tone, metal, metal sided building. The entries, again, you can see on the top elevation, north and south entry points. They have Wayne Scott, Stone Wayne Scott wrapping around the north and south corners of the building. Again, this identifies the entry. It adds some architectural character. Identifies it as a special feature to the, to the building. Again, it is a warehouse type building in industrial center. Not gonna get a lot of architectural flair and the detail that you'd expect in commercial or residential, but we do have the garage doors and human scale doors on the west side. And that is going to be within a storage yard, an equipment fenced in area in the west side of the building. So basically, that bottom elevation would be visible from Sixth Street and County Road seven as they viewed across the detention basin and across the parking lot of the Vesser funeral home. And the landscape plans. You can see by the, by the way the building is sighted. It's not, it does not encroach into that setback, but it's about as close as you can get. And it was, and it was tough for the consultant, it was to actually be able to cite this size building and to provide the parallel parking versus the perpendicular parking that's typical in the front of the building. But the solution that was the parallel parking and with that, he added trees and landscaping and so forth along the front to buffer the to accentuate the architecture, to buffer the parking and so forth. And the landscape did comply with the town code for light industrial zone district, which essentially required an eight-foot perimeter buffer around the site. Trees and shrubs, combination of which provide depth and character to the landscape. Screening functional as well as aesthetic. Entryway is, north and south entries are two-way, and from the south entry, that is one-way through the front of the building. That is a one-way directional path drive through the, along the front of that building from the south to the north entrance. So that's how the parallel parking came to be. And north and south is two-way into the storage yard behind where employee, employees will also park as well as equipment and materials will be stored in that back storage area. I will say that because of the visibility from Sixth Street and Seventh Larry McConney Road seven, the applicant did agree to put up an opaque fence along that west property line of this site to screen and to buffer the storage area from public view. So that was the concern and the applicant did respond to that. Photometric plan. There will be scoundrel lights on the building itself over the man, excuse me, the human skilled doors, garages and so forth, and along the front. Photometrics did comply with the town standards for the minimal, I believe it's point one at the property boundaries, boundary line. Or twenty feet beyond, I believe, but there was that, they did, photometrics did comply with town code. Lastly, staff summary and findings for approval. This site plan, which is again, the ongoing sequence of events at Bonfire, it's just another development consistent with the Bonfire vision, the subdivision, so with it right in line, right in character with what's out there and probably what will come in the future. It is a light industrial, commercial subdivision. It is consistent with our town land use code and account plan. And again, it's right in character with what's the history of that subdivision has, has become. Lot size and dimensions are consistent, as shown in the final plat. What else? And again, no buildings or structures infringe on any of the easements and the applicant is aware of the Sinclair Oil and Gas easement, that fifty-foot easement that bisects that, that site. He is, the applicant is working with the beneficiary of that easement, Sinclair Oil, negotiate use of the storage area, putting in fence, gates and storage over the top of that easement, so they are working with the Sinclair to secure an agreement on using that, that easement for their purposes. Site grading is consistent with the stone drain criterion. Again, this is part of a subdivision. The subdivision provided for basins and conveyance of drainage surface runoff and so forth across the subdivision. The subdivision to the, to the west, I'm sorry, the drainage basin to the west did not primarily serve this site. The drainage for this site primarily went north and south. And there is a drainage ditch along Glow, I'm sorry, along Glow, Ember and Bonfire that transports the water to a drainage basin in the southwest corner of the subdivision. And that was all done by, at the time of subdivision. So there is a regional drainage basin that serves this subdivision. And again, there's no P U D to be associated with this project. And the development standards of Article Five, we have worked with the client. As I said, he submitted plans that I looked at this today and in response, they acknowledged our comments and addressed most of them, but again, we haven't gone into any great detail as far as a review to confirm everything has been satisfied to be addressed, but the changes I did see were in line with what the comments we had requested be, to be resolved, so. But again, we'll, in greater we're going to create a review of that in the, in the days, few days, several days in the future, I'm sorry. Anyway, with that, staff has recommended approval of this site plan. We are asking that planning commission allow us to make my review and address the minor comments that remain for, for approval and with that, I'll address any questions the planning commission may have. I believe the applicant is here as well. So we're here to address any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. And I was going to recommend that the applicant, Mark, if you wanted to share a little bit about your site plan or your business, we'd love to hear from you too. If you don't mind coming up to the microphone just for the recording. But yeah, Mark and Polasek, sorry. Polasek, my apologies. Thanks, Mark.
No problem. My name is Mark Polasek. I own Streamline Crane Service. I'm a small crane outfit with one machine. I'm the only employee. Live here in Wellington, so it's hometown. Just looking at moving my company here and kind of basing everything right out of Wellington. You have any questions?
Any questions from the planning commission?
Yes.
Site planner. How many trees are on the site, Paul? Kidding. I think Wyatt, how many trees are on there?
I have just a couple of quick questions, which will be one of you. So on the drainage, I noted on the staff executive summary that they provided grading drainage plans, but that there's a bunch of, well, additional information is required. Has that been provided? Wyatt?
Wyatt Knutson, C T L Thompson. We have been working with engineering on resolving that. They had a few questions on some of the like the gravel parking in the back for the pervious and impervious surfaces. And then also a few questions on the drainage, and we responded to those questions. We're still waiting for the last round of comments back, but we think we got and take care of it.
And then?
I'm sorry, Mr. Shalay, just to follow up on that too. Mr. Knutson spoke to it, but there were questions of a minor nature that wouldn't have significant impacts to the overall site layout. They're mostly engineering standards that we're verifying to make sure that it functions per our engineering standards, but it shouldn't result in any significant impacts to the site layout.
And then I just wanted to clarify or just ensure on the separate tap for irrigation, that'll be an irrigation tap and classified as such, not as a commercial tap, correct?
The irrigation tap requirements are because the, with the recent utility rate changes, the irrigation is metered and billed separately and differently than the indoor domestic rate. So that's the purpose for the irrigation.
That's what I was clarifying, was that it'll be, it'll be built separately as an irrigation tap.
Correct.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Mark, just a business question for my own curiosity. So I'll keep it quick, because I know I harp on you guys for not asking specific questions. What, what, I guess, nature wise, what is the business? Do you expect? Do you bring equipment into service to where you're, you're increasing traffic and town limits? Are we expecting an increase in forty-ton trains walking down Cleveland Ave? Just so it's on the record, maybe just give us kind of a quick rundown.
Basic operation. I store the crane in the building at night. I drive and I pick up in the morning, get in the crane. I go out, I go all over northern Colorado, southern Wyoming, Nebraska, just doing crane rental. I come back at the end of the day, park the crane, get my pickup, go home.
Okay.
So really, traffic wise, it's only me driving in in the morning with my pickup, leaving with the crane, coming back at the end of the day. So traffic flow is not an issue at all.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
And that's kind of a two-part question, and this is a little bit more site specific. We've seen a bunch of site plans recently, and it seems like some have traffic impact studies and some do not. What is the cutoff? What is the, what are the criteria, I guess, to where staff considers, okay, this needs a traffic impact study versus clearly this one does not?
Yeah, so thanks, and that's a great question. The town's engineering standards have different thresholds for traffic impact studies. And we have a procedure in place that for applications that are unlikely to require a full traffic, traffic impact study or T I S, they may apply for a waiver. And the waiver is evaluated by town engineering staff. Sometimes we'll engage a third-party traffic consultant to take a look at those as well. But if the criteria for the waiver is satisfied, then they don't have to go any further for a full-blown T I S. Other instances, there's an existing T I S for a subdivision that was evaluated and the requirements identified for the subdivision plat. And the site development, like a pad site like this, might only need to provide a memo explaining this is the traffic generation expected for this type of a use. And that's a little bit different than a T I S. It's really just a verification that the proposed use isn't going to create additional traffic impacts that haven't already been contemplated. So we have a couple of different thresholds from an engineering standpoint, and the applicant is required to submit adequate documentation to verify that they either already, the site already meets the applicable design criteria. If they're making, or if their, their new use would impact traffic in a way that new additional requirements are required, they'd be required to satisfy those. And in rare instances for a pad site, it might require a full-blown traffic impact study. And the town would have to evaluate the findings of that study to determine what requirements might be needed. And as a general rule, our, our town staff doesn't usually include the full T I S in your agenda packet because it's a detailed, multi-page document that's heavily laden in engineering standards. And it's not typically one of the planning commission's review criteria. Our traditional approach is to submit the recommendations of staff based on the findings of the T I S or the waivers or the other procedures. That's certainly something we can talk about if there's additional detail the planning commission would like to see for the T I Ss, but we, as a general rule, we don't give you you know, multiple hundred-page documents of traffic engineering studies or other engineering studies. We usually rely on our engineering staff to evaluate those and provide us those recommendations.
I think that's fair. Yeah, thank you. No, that was just strictly an observation this time after seeing a couple of site plans recently that sometimes we get T I S data and sometimes we don't, so. Thank you for clarifying.
Of course.
Yeah, questions?
Quick question on the pipeline. The Sinclair pipeline easement, is that an existing pipeline with Sinclair or is it an easement to sell down the road to put a pipeline in?
It's an existing pipeline.
Okay.
I was more concerned about your driveway there in concrete over there easement. If they just had to come and put another line in, so you're good.
Sure. So my understanding, maybe incorrectly, was that that easement goes through your storage along the back. Is that concrete or gravel?
It's gonna be all gravel in the back, but right where I got the driveway with the gate in the front corner.
Okay. Yep. Okay.
And I signed off the labor saying.
Yeah, that makes sense. Just following up on the crane situation, one crane, that sounds great, but what, what's the expectation, three years, five years? I mean, one crane, that's it.
I went big and I went back small. I'm done with employees. I'm not going back there again. So I've, I've learned a lot of lessons over the years. I've been in business.
Been doing it a while.
And I'm not doing it towards everything.
You're it. Can you, can you speak to the fencing? I heard opaque, but what? Can you speak to any, any more about the nature of that fencing? How tall is it?
Six foot?
Six foot.
Six foot fence.
Okay.
I've looked into the, I don't even know what technical term is, the mesh. I can mesh that back hole screen in for three hundred bucks. So I know the wind over time can beat that stuff up, but if I gotta replace it once a year for three hundred dollars, keep it nice and clean. I was gonna do a light gray color, something matching the building.
Okay, thank you. Is there a six feet? Doesn't seem very tall. Is there, is there a expectation for a site like this? Is six feet adequate, I assume?
In the development standards for light industrial and industrial properties, screening fences can go up to eight feet. There's not a hard fast requirement defined as to what is the appropriate prescribed method. I think the, the, from memory, the code says that the planning commission may approve taller screening if needed to adequately screen the uses on the site. An example of that might be some of the outdoor storage lots that store RVs and things, and even an eight-foot screen fence doesn't cover the height of an RV. In some instances, there might be a need to increase the screening depending on what's behind that. I think the staff's evaluation for what we were hearing is that the outdoor storage yard is just gonna be used for maybe lay-down materials, vehicle storage, but probably not the crane, since that'll be a pretty valuable piece of equipment stored inside the building. But Mark, perhaps if you wanted to speak to any other uses that you might be using the outdoor storage area or future uses that might be anticipated that might need to be considered.
Basically, storage, I got trailers, I guess, flatbed trailers, a rigging trailer, it's an enclosed trailer. I do store AC units from time to time for customers. And so every now and then we might have a truck come in where I get unload some AC units, we'll stall for a couple of weeks, then I'll load them on one of my trailers, haul to a job site. But that's pretty rare, you know, it's only from time to time. People don't have anywhere to store that unit at. It's just another income for me to store my just. But basically, there's not gonna be a lot of stuff out. It's gonna be a pretty open lot.
Okay, fantastic. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? No? Okay, anyone want a motion to approve?
Ready for that already?
There are no other questions or comments on the site plan specifics?
Alright.
Don't make me do it.
I move to approve the site development plans for lot three, block one, Bonfire subdivision, second filing, subject to staff comments and final engineering plan acceptance.
Second. Roll call please.
Chairman, would you allow any discussion on that motion?
Couldn't it happen beforehand, could it?
Well, I tried to get a word in, and then the motion was already being said, and I didn't want to interrupt.
Yes.
I wanted to call attention because the motion was subject to staff comments. One of the, the comments related to photometrics and lighting for the driveways. And I don't know if, if that was a concern. We had, the staff recommendation was to include pole lighting at the driveway entrances because there's no lighting along the private drive here, and that was something that had been identified as part of previous developments that because of the lack of lighting, an effort would be made at the time of site plan review to ensure lighting at entrances. And I don't, I don't know if we had a chance to discuss that before the comment went out, or if that would be a concern of the applicant.
Yeah, I was gonna say we met the requirements of the off-site lighting being less than the point one, but I read in the board packet today that the, the street lighting was one of the requirements, so we have not addressed that because I just noticed it in the comments this round, but we'll make sure to get that in there.
Okay, and that's, that's possible with your site design to find a location.
You should only, I mean, on the south entrance, because you're guarding one of the north.
There's one on the north already.
Okay.
Cause that's a shared entrance with.
Oh, okay, that makes sense to me. Okay, thank you.
Nothing that adversely impacts approval of a site plan, I don't think.
No, it shouldn't be. I just, I wanted to call attention to it because it wasn't specifically addressed, and it was a comment that came in in between submittals, so. Thank you.
One more thing. Can you talk about the signage? I noticed that.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor now, so procedurally.
I thought there was discussion after the motion. Isn't that typical?
Discussion, but additional questions that might reveal more information.
But that's what that just was.
That was in the packet. Is it? Go ahead. It's your motion. Go. Go ahead. It's your motion, go.
Yeah, it, it's not uncommon to have a few additional questions and discussion after a motion's been made. Sometimes motions get amended based on information for the discussion, so it's not completely out of line.
Yes, 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 ask your question.
We'll talk after. In the, in the packet, you talked about the, the signage that you, that it would come under a different application, which has happened before, and you were requesting that we allow staff to make an administrative decision on that, that it wouldn't come back in front of the planning commission, is that true? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, so, excuse me, traditionally, it's, it's not uncommon for a site plan review to not have all the details designed for site signage. And it's, it's common for planning staff to request some flexibility to review signage outside of a site plan process. We still have to meet all the same, staff evaluates it to the design standards of our land use code for size, placement, attachment manner and things like that. So, and the applicants are required to obtain permits for signs anyhow, so our request is to approve those administratively if it meets the requirements of the town land use code. If it doesn't, then they'd be eligible for a variance or some other application to consider changes, but essentially, it's a, it's a usually a fairly safe review process for staff to perform administratively because the requirements are defined very narrowly in the code. The, the one site plan element that, that often could come into question is the placement of monument signages, signage. And in this case, I don't know that a monument sign is proposed, it'd probably be a wall sign for the existing building.
On the, on the entry door. And the unit's set up for possibly two tenants, so if another tenant comes into that side and they wanna put a sign on the building, that'll be a separate.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
What would be the nature of the, uh, storage for additional tenants? Would it be consistent with what you're describing here?
Okay, after that, is there a need to amend the motion? That's on the right. Can we proceed with roll call then, off the original motion? Okay, I just wanna make sure we're doing it right, that's, that's my job. Make sure we're doing it right. You're, you're good, thanks for all the, the considerations. Bert did. So motion, second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Chalet.
Yes.
Moyer.
Yes.
Knack.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
McCaffrey.
Yes.
Sardar.
Yes. Passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I think we're done with you. Hey, I see we have a line for communications, and that's a um, that's a quick staff presentation whenever you're ready, Cody.
Thank you, Chairman. So the communications that we included in the packet was just a quarterly report. We started doing that this year, staff's been tracking our residential building permit activities, it's a good indicator and trend line for community development. We committed to putting this report out quarterly, so you can kind of keep up and, and see the changes over time. For, we're tracking both our permitted residential units as well as the town's lot inventory. And lot inventory, we track the number of platted lots, the number of lots that are zoned appropriately and the number of lots that are have infrastructure in place and ready to issue permits. So you can see in this report, we just have it broken out by subdivision, and then we aggregate the numbers, so you can see where the activity is occurring and what involved. We did see a little bit of an uptick in the number of permits in the second quarter, first quarter was had a okay start, but a pretty flat middle section there based on national economy and housing markets. We are starting to see that uptick just a little bit right now. But our number of lots available for permit are continuing to trend downwards, we have not had new lots with infrastructure online just yet. But Sage Meadows Second Subdivision is currently under construction for public improvements that would create an additional hundred and three residential lots to be built out over a couple of years. So this was just, and we're gonna continue to do this for the planning commission and for the board. This will be in the future Board of Trustees packet also to help, help make sure that information's available to inform our decisions moving forward. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do you do the same for industrial or commercial?
We do not track commercial industrial the same way. There are a number of websites out there that brokerage, listing agents, LoopNet has a lot of information for available commercial industrial sites. And it's harder to track because they're not, the development pattern is not quite as consistent as residential lots are. Commercial lots, industrial lots have different sizes and different development standards than residential does.
Specifically for Wellington, we can't have that many. So I guess my question is, are we tracking it for Wellington? I'm just curious. This
Right.
Your residential applications are for Wellington, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So my question is, do we do the same thing for commercial or industrial properties in Wellington?
We do not. There's, just the variability in nature of commercial comes and goes, the, it doesn't, it's not a very good indicator of trends for a small growing town. Usually, any, any, you know, commercial development is usually welcomed with open arms for a small community to get the additional beneficial uses. But one significant commercial development doesn't necessarily lead to another and vice versa. Whereas housing patterns are kind of the traditional means of tracking development patterns, and usually, uh, commercial development follows residential development, so in terms of a, a baseline indicator, the residential is tracked pretty closely. It also informs some of the decisions the town makes for availability of public services for school districts, for water and wastewater treatment capacity and other things that we do track very closely. Commercial, it gets looked at on a case-by-case basis to, to review what the relative impacts are for any given business, but as a general rule, the residential provides a better indicator for the movement of the town's growth.
Thank you.
Can I just pay you back on that? Cause he really, I think I've asked you that question before about commercial, maybe not in a meeting, but how difficult would it be to just be like, like this particular development, right, the bonfire? There's however many open lots now, right? But I mean, there's only so many that are annexed into town, just available space, right? Even if it's just by a designation of an address, and the only reason why I ask that is for I kind of view this whole thing in this seat as a lens of what could potentially be coming down the line, what's the potential of what we could see? And from a commercial or industrial standpoint, I would view it the same way, for those things that are annexed into town, obviously not anything outside of that, but decent point, what I was discussing with you before the meeting, determining what's available in part would be helpful because people ask you questions because they know you're a planning commissioner, right, and it's like, I only know what I see. Right, so I think it would be helpful to at least have an idea of where there is some commercial space that's undeveloped, for whatever reason.
Is that strictly, are you strictly interested in lot inventory? Like just adding a, a line item or a column to lot inventory?
Yeah.
Just to show available commercial lots, not necessarily the building permit tracking?
No, just a, just a basic, a real high-level basic, this is what is out there and available undeveloped at this point.
Would that just be another sheet to add commercial properties to all the neighborhood residential lot inventory that you have going already?
Potentially, excuse me, it could be, I guess, and, and I'm, I'm happy to look at some different means of, of tracking commercial. I know that some of our board members have asked similar questions. What, what information would be useful? Because there's, one of the challenges with tracking commercial, and again, we're happy to take a look at some different options, but it'd be helpful to have some guidance as to what information would be beneficial for that reporting purpose. Is it the, just the number of acres, is it the number of lots? Because those can be plotted and replatted, we've had development, commercial developments proposed where they've developed multiple lots as a unified development plan. Commercial needs vary a lot greater than residential needs do. And so when commercial businesses are looking for space or opportunities, many times, in my experience, they don't care how many lots are platted or how they're platted, they look at it and go, if we need ten acres instead of five acres, we'll buy two lots and redevelop it the way we need it. And so it, it doesn't provide the same level of indicator as some of our residential that has a very uniform type of product that's placed on it. Some other factors to look at, or do you want it split out by zoning type? We would have to do a little bit more analysis on that. You know, so just what are the types of indicators that would be the most useful if we were to create a similar inventory for commercial properties?
So for me, it would be I'm gonna just say it should be annexed, right, like I don't wanna see, I don't necessarily, it's not that I don't care, I'm not interested in what hasn't been annexed, right, but how it's zoned, whether there's infrastructure and either lots or acres side, I mean, lots is kind of confusing, like what you're saying, because like the property there on Cleveland, that's actually two lots, I think, right?
I think it's three.
Or three, so see, that doesn't mean a whole lot, so maybe more like the size of the, of the, so, cause like the size of whatever that property is. But to be able to see that, it gives, it's like another future-looking thing, right? And when commercial development happens, there are impact fees and tap fees and all of those things that play into that as well. So I think it's a valuable, I think it's valuable information, if not just as valuable as houses, because you never know when any of this stuff is gonna get built until they decide to build it.
Or replanted like we had
That changed, that'll change this once that's approved, if it's approved.
That's right.
Then that'll change this count here as well, right? And so I just think it's, I think it would be good and useful information for us to have so that we're looking at it from a lens of more than just residential growth, but we're looking at potential commercial growth at some point, or industrial.
Yeah, I would agree, and I recognize the challenge that you're describing, so to me, it's more of an inventory by zoning type. With a footnote for size. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, because one of the things that I saw on the Board of Adjustments is a lot of times what comes before the Board of Adjustments is a request to adjust something because there is no other inventory available. So had we known that far enough in advance, right, and I, and I get it, this is a multi-year potential deal, because if what we have in inventory is X, but we know we're growing at a rate residentially that's gonna require more commercial businesses to support that, then we may need to be looking at, what do we need, how do we need to grow the footprint of the community? So for me, it's, it's more of an inventory thing as we look to future planning.
Would it be at all useful for future annexations and plating purposes? So when they come in and suggest a quarter of the annexation is commercial and three-quarters is residential, you look at the tool and go, maybe it's half and half, because we're running out of commercial space. So I think, I think the simple inventory would.
So look for a more quantitative type of analysis than a qualitative.
Yes, I, I think, I agree with the assessment that it doesn't really do much for trends. But the inventory, I'll, I'll admit, the inventory would be nice to have on this report, since you're doing it already for residential. Hopefully, it's not too big of a burden.
Okay. So I, I we'll take a look at this and, and I'm trying to provide what you're requesting, but I think what I'm, what I'm hearing is, I'm just kind of restating so I can put it in my notes. But the desire would be to break it down by zone type and how many, what, what square footage or acres of that type, and whether or not it has infrastructure available to it, whether or not it's platted or unplatted. I know we have a couple of properties that are in the town and zone commercial, well, I'd say a couple, maybe just one, but I know of one at least that's not platted, but it's zoned for commercial purposes, which would obviously require some entitlement work for someone to develop it. So it would require a longer timeline than a buildable lot like a bonfire subdivision. I think we can put that together, at least at a high level, and we'll take a stab at that for the next quarter and present that back to the planning commission, and then we'd like to, staff would solicit some feedback on, are we showing you something that's useful? And we can continue to tailor that as we move forward.
That'd be great.
I have just one small request while we're talking about timelines. For me, if it's possible, if you have an informed prediction of when some of these lots will come online through your talks with developers, or, you know, just to give an idea of, you know, when things might be moving along. If that exists, I think that would be helpful for me too in terms of looking into the future. I don't know if anyone else agrees, but I think that would be useful information.
In my, my last question would kind of piggyback on that one would be, I know that some of the expansion with the wastewater plant and in some of the utilities was based on some projections on housing. To what extent does this help or hurt the anticipated revenue, you know, from the increased water rates that have happened over the last two years, or do we know?
Well, what we have is a, that's why this is tracked, and, and in addition to other, other reasons, but a couple of years ago, when the town was beginning some of those conversations around water and wastewater expansion projects and utilities, we identified a, a concern that we were gonna be bumping up against capacity, and we did work with our development community to change the rate of, of development of residential to make sure we stayed within our available capacities at both of our plants. And we have successfully done that to date, our plants are not in jeopardy of exceeding their permitted capacity. But we continue to monitor that very closely, and we are working, continuing to work with the developers to make sure that we do not exceed that threshold.
Okay, so the, the second part of the question is, what about budget, right? So in other words, if no houses are coming online, no use, got it. No houses coming online, they're not contributing their part to the repayment plan. So how are we doing on that?
The revenue projections for and, and I, I won't give too many specifics because I don't have the numbers in front of me directly, but suffice it to say that the in modeling the payment plans for the water and wastewater treatment plant projects, we do, we did take out debt from, for the town to finance those projects. And it does require annual repayments, whatever that number is for both the plants, I don't have it in front of me. And so to, to demonstrate how those debts would be repaid, we did model the number of expected development permits per year. On average, it's a projection, and we know it changes year to year, but there was something like a hundred and fifty to two hundred residential units per year was the projection based on market economy and having both plants underway to support those, those development projections. So a hundred and fifty to two hundred lots per year was the projection for residential. And this, this trend that you're seeing is that that's our inventory for lot availability is about six hundred platted lots. About thirty-four of them with infrastructure, so we'll be below those projections without some changes happening. That's not intended to be a statement that is alarmist, and that's why we track trends to understand where we're at. The understanding being that if we're low in some years, we may be high in some other years, and as a general rule, we're going to average something in the middle, so. That's why we started tracking it to make sure that we have that information in front of us to know which years are high and which ones are low.
So what I'm hearing is there's not an expected issue at this point?
Not at this point. We, we feel like we're in a good position, but we recognize that the, the future will have some projects that will need to continue to be paid for, if it's not paid for through impact fees and new development, it'll have to be paid for in some other manner that we'll have to consider all the options.
Can I just add to that, since I sat on the sewer rate roundtable and then the water and sewer roundtable, you were on the sewer one, right? No, well, you were on both, so you know how that modeling went? Or do you recall? Right. It was like a hundred, they modeled it really low. Yeah, like it was a low modeling number, the first round. And then the second round, when they, when we came up with our recommendation, that cost of service that went into all of that encompassed a large portion of well, yeah, so a lot of that is being picked up because the rates got adjusted properly. And so it made it less dependent than our first round, which was more dependent on new build. And the second round was not completely not dependent, but I remember it being less dependent. So, but I do remember the modeling number being a hundred.
And that, that hundred for residential permits was to keep the town from exceeding thresholds. That was, that was the number that we were working with developers to stay under that amount, so we didn't, uh, capacity, yes, exactly. And even in that effort, you know, we didn't come out at exactly a hundred, actually, a couple of years we came out below that, so we have a little bit additional capacity that we could permit. From the last reports I've heard, both plant projects are on track and on. Um, from the last reports I've heard, both plant projects are on track and on schedule, so. Uh, we anticipate those um being open and operational here in the next uh year or so.
And do you know when Sage Meadows, the second? Whatever. Is gonna start when they're gonna, I know they're working on infrastructure right now.
Yeah, it, we would expect for for that scale up project. Um, it's a hundred and three uh residential lots in that development. They're doing it as uh the infrastructure is one phase, um, so. I think their paving is gonna be their, probably their biggest obstacle, but we would anticipate being ready to issue lot uh permits for lots this fall.
Okay. That's good.
Okay, any other communications from staff?
Um, the only thing I was gonna mention was our next meeting is August seventh, I think is the first Monday. Um, and for that meeting, we do, we're anticipating one site plan review um and a petition for annexation was recently submitted to the town. The board of trustees looks at that first. That's on the schedule for tomorrow night. And if they adopt a resolution to start proceedings, we'll bring that to the planning commission in August for a a look at annexation and making recommendations.
Okay, anything else?
It's all for staff.
That's all for. Everyone. Adjourned.